Okay, everyone, thank you so much for coming tonight. Welcome to the public hearing, the third and final public hearing for the Aurora City Council Charter Review Commission, or Committee, Policy Committee. I'm going to go ahead and call the public hearing to order at 7:02. We will be hearing from staff regarding proposed changes from APD and Aurora Fire. And then we will hear miscellaneous items. So if you have comments that are about those items, please give them while we're on that agenda item for each of the PD and Fire proposals. And then for anything else, we'll take comment after those are done during miscellaneous items, as well as give some updates regarding online feedback that we've received. So with that being stated, we will go ahead and start with our first new business item, which is an ordinance, 2A, an ordinance to refer an item to the ballot regarding division and deputy chiefs. And I believe we'll have Division Chief Jewell as our speaker.
Yes, I'm going to hear you.
As well as Chief Acevedo.
Good evening, Madam Chair, council members. Thank you. Division Chief Chris Jewell presenting those charter changes for the upcoming ballot. I'm sorry, which one did you want me to start with, ma'am?
The division chiefs and deputies. Deputies.
Okay. So with regard to this requested charter change, the ask is, the first paragraph in Section 1 is just clarifying the current practice. It just wasn't clear in charter with regard to the status of commanders, deputy chief and division chief with regard to civil service and how that affects those ranks and sort of appointed positions. So this just clarifies that all ranks up to captain are civil service ranks, ranks above captain are not, and that if you are appointed to commander, division chief, deputy chief, that you still maintain your past civil service rank that you last held. So that could be a lieutenant, it could be a captain. So that's just clarifying language that is current practice. From there, I'm sorry, I'll stop there. Are there any questions with regard to that piece?
Nope, no questions.
Okay. So Section 5 then goes on to talk about the number of command officers in a ratio to authorized sworn. Currently, the charter states that there can be six commanders, and it doesn't really allow for what happens as the organization and the city grows. So this change is designed to keep the charter relevant based on authorized sworn strength as the department grows in size. So this currently is asking that we change the charter language to 0.5 percent of the number of authorized sworn officers rounded to the nearest whole number can be designated to positions of division chief. So as right now, that would not make any change with regard to number of division chiefs in the organization. That would maintain that number that's currently at four. And then it goes on to request the next change, that the number of corresponding, 1.5 percent of the number of authorized sworn officers rounded to the nearest whole number can be designated as commanders. So now we're talking with regard to the executive staff. So again, this is just designed to keep pace with the growth of the organization with that request. And then the last piece of this does get away from the ratio, and it's because of span of control, the request is that we have an additional deputy chief as soon as we hit 800 sworn, and then we can add yet another one, at least with permission from city leadership, once we hit 1,500 authorized sworn. And obviously, that growth is going to take a substantial amount of time, so that's not tied to a particular ratio with regard to that request with deputy chief. So I think that's all for that Section 5. And there's one last piece within this requested amendment, and it's in Section 7. And this is changing the charter language to be consistent with Colorado Post rules, which have changed since this was written. And it used to, Post rules used to mandate that if you came from the outside as a deputy chief or division chief, and you were not Colorado Post certified, you had 12 months to become Colorado Post certified. Colorado Post has changed that rule now, and the rule currently states that you have to come on as a certified Colorado Post peace officer. And that means for all practical purposes with regard to our agency, that that's a provisional certification that must be converted to a full certification within six months. But you do have that provisional certification, so you are in fact a peace officer in Colorado from day one of your employment at that rank. So I'll stop with that and ask if there's any questions that I can answer.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll begin first with any public comment in person regarding this item. So are there any speakers to comment in person? Yes, Aliyah?
We have Kelly Schilling.
That's not in this one.
Yes, please. So yes, all speakers, please come to the podium, and you will have three minutes to comments, comment, and if you have questions to address to either the staff presenters or the committee, you can ask questions and we'll respond.
Very good. My name is Kelly Schilling. I'm sure you're tired of seeing me already, but here we go again. I have just a little question about process. It seems as though you're tying staffing needs to specific population or officer head count, I guess is what I'm looking at. And you're going to put this into the city charter. Wouldn't you want more flexibility either tied to percentages or, so that, the last time the city charter was changed was 65 years ago or something? Do you want to wait 65 years to change this again? So my suggestion is, is that the language be less specific in terms of numbers, but more broad in guidelines, so that you have more flexibility to come to the city leadership and get what you need if your needs change. That's the only comment I have on it.
Okay. Division Chief Jewell or Chief, do you have any comments on kind of how you guys set this up to try to be flexible?
I could start.
No, you can stay in case you have any follow-up questions.
Okay. So this, it is tied to the number of authorized strength is what we call that number. So right now, we're about 748 are authorized strength. And is requested in here, as that number increases, we would have the ability and flexibility to add additional command staff. It is tied to a percentage in that 0.5 percent of that authorized strength. So as that strength goes up to 800, 900, or 1,000, that percentage continues to, that ratio increases. So it does provide some flexibility for us to add positions as the department and the organization grows. So I don't know if that completely answers your question, but I want to, I feel like this gives us some flexibility, but I'll let the chief go.
Thanks. Is this on?
Um.
Am I on?
There we go. I'm on now, I think.
Yes.
Well, thank you for that question. I think it's a great question. And as it stands now, we have zero ability to add command staff because it's already in the charter. And it's all about really span and control. And so what this will give us is what you just talked about, is as we grow in terms of the percentages, we get the ability to come, not automatically, because I think, quite honestly, quite honestly, we need more officers, not more workers on the field half the time, and not more people wearing these stars and bars. So it'll address what you just talked about. So we don't have to have a charter change. And we can hold an abeyance. For example, maybe with growth, we end up under this formula with the ability to ask for two or three more commanders or two or three more deputy chiefs, but we may decide we don't have an operational need, but at least we'll have the authority to ask and get the budget positions. So it does address.
If I might, I may have misunderstood your explanations here, but what I heard was...
Can you just speak into the mic? Sorry, just for folks to hear.
Sorry. I'll address you, and they can hear. Okay, there we go. We're all on the same page. What I heard was hard numbers, about command at 800 and then at 1,500. So those sound like, 1,500 sounds like forever away, but what happens if, and during the course of the next 65 years, if there are innovations in managing police forces and we would have to come back to the citizens to change that to reflect new developments in management techniques, wouldn't we want to have a broader ability within the context of the charter to address flexible issues that might very well bring us to bear with the crime or the differentials in crime as they develop in the population?
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you so much for raising that. I think we can definitely look at if there are even more effective ways we could look at setting those numbers. Obviously, council will discuss this at length before deciding whether or not to refer each item to the ballot. So do you have any further comments or questions?
Not about this item.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, let's wait until, well, oh wait, if it's a follow-up on this, then yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it is. And this is for Chief Acevedo and Deputy Chief, or Division Chief Jewell. Why if instead of making the requirements baked into the charter, we actually just remove the requirements from the charter and handle that through code, since it's much easier to change?
I'd be fine with that, which is, quite honestly, in most modern cities, these positions are not in the charter. They're really a matter of the elected officials through the budget process authorizing them. And it would provide the flexibility that, because even the way it's written now, the way that we're asking for it, it's not automatic. So why put a parameter in when, if we have a justification, it's either justified or it isn't? So it would be, would kind of address the flexibility he talked, he talked to. Because it says it triggers it on all of it, but I don't think anything's automatic, is it? The way that's written by, that we proposed it, nothing's automatic. It all has to come to council.
Correct, yes. That's right.
So I think that would work as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So let's go ahead and hear the remainder of the public comment. That's it? That's all the public comment? Do we have public comment online, Michael?
We do have some people joining us online, and we are just asking you to please raise your hand on WebEx if you would like to speak. So we do have one speaker for this item, Arnie Schultz. Arnie, I'll give you the permission to unmute, so please unmute yourself and speak.
Arnie, you should have.
There. Finally, finally had permission. Now, I agree with what was just mentioned about code by Councilmember Marcano. It seems much simpler and easier and more flexible.
All right. Thank you so much. And we do have some online comments. One of them was relevant to what Chief Acevedo said, which is, we need more police officers on the street investigating and doing internal investigations, not, according to this comment, more bureaucrats. And then there are a number of other comments that are broadly supportive, saying that as long as they're overseeing positive and accountable officers, they don't see a problem. And then whatever would increase the rate of addressing crime in the city, they would support. And then the assumption that as we grow, we probably need more of these positions. So that's kind of the general supportive comments and just general overview of the online comments that we received on this item. So do members of the committee have any further comments or questions?
I just, sorry, I just have a comment. So I do agree with Councilmember Marcano on this, but I know it does come to council. But however, if there is a chance that it doesn't go with this recommendation, I definitely would make sure that this is kind of explained, Chief Acevedo and Chief Jewell, in the blue book, because it can cause, it causes a little confusion, and what it could happen is people vote no because they can't really understand exactly. So if it does happen to go this direction, I would just recommend that the language be specified to what you stated.
Absolutely. And Madam Chair, may I just respond real quickly?
Yes, please.
To the comments of the folks online, I wanted to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to change this language so we can build our needs and build our business case like we should do every budget year. And that flexibility, I think, will make us a much more nimble organization as the city continues to grow into the future.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Marcano, anything further?
Nope, nothing further from me.
Okay. Seeing no further comments on this item, we will review all of the public feedback from this hearing, as well as the public feedback we receive online in the city council. So this committee will review it in our final meeting before we then report to the rest of council. So we'll go ahead and move all of this forward to that meeting. So then we will hear the next item, I believe also going to be presented by Chief Acevedo and Division Chief Jewell on probationary and promotional procedures.
Great, thank you. So this section discusses lateral officers and probationary status as well as, or actually, the next one's probationary status, I apologize. This one's just for the incoming lateral officers, as well as ratios to basic and lateral hiring. So the beginning of this talks about giving a lateral officer the ability to be eligible for a promotional process earlier than they ordinarily would be. Currently, if you're an incoming officer, either basic or lateral, doesn't matter, you have to wait five years in order to promote to sergeant. And this language is designed to recognize previous experience. We do have a request, I had a conversation with Chief Acevedo prior to this meeting. We did say that we wanted them to have at least two years as an Aurora police officer. We'd like to amend that to three, giving them more time here, and then recognizing if they have at least two years of prior experience, then that equals the five years that we'd be requesting. So we do request that amendment to this, but that if an officer comes in, they're full-time paid officers in good standing from another jurisdiction, and they have a total of five years of experience with at least three years of that experience with Aurora, that they'd be eligible to promote to sergeant. So that's the first piece of this request. And then the second piece of this charter change request is that currently charter states that we can hire no more lateral officers than basic officers in any given year. And given the competitive nature of our employment environment, we're just respectfully requesting that we strike that language and we take the best officers we can regardless of prior experience, basic experience, you know, we just select the best officers possible. So those are the two changes, and yeah, that's it for that section.
Okay, thank you. Aliyah, do we have anyone in person to comment on this item?
We have Kelly Schilling.
All right, please come down.
Should I introduce myself each time, or?
It's okay.
Once and done?
I think one is enough in the particular evening.
Well, you may think that already about me, but I guess I have this sort of a similar belief structure in this. Why weld this into the charter that is a document that doesn't get addressed very often? As you said, if we could put this into the code and allow greater flexibility to the management of the city, more particularly the council, I think that's a better way to handle staffing issues, whether it be police or fire or anything else. And I, one of the things that was commented on was, you know, two years, three years, five years, hire the best officers that we, I agree with that, as so long as we've seen in the news, or has brought to me concerns about hiring problematic officers from other jurisdictions. And I don't think that needs to be in this charter, but I think that needs to be part of our consideration in terms of staffing. That's another comment that I had. And then lastly, I think, I don't understand the relationship between the collective bargaining agreement, the charter, and the city code. So if someone could offer some clarification, do those, would you, would you need the flexibility, for example, to, within the code rather than the charter, to address issues that might come from collective bargaining?
So first, I will let the chiefs answer, kind of respond with any response they have to your questions, and then I may try to address the final question if there's anything to add.
So I, no, we both completely agree with you in hiring the best officers possible. And with regard to your concern about hiring problematic officers from other jurisdictions, we thoroughly vet any lateral officer. We travel to their home jurisdiction. They get a full background process to include reference interviews, polygraph, psychs, the whole, the whole nine yards with regard to them being appropriate for employment with our organization. And we turn away a large number of laterals that are in fact running from their organization for a variety of reasons. So we do a thorough job of that because we don't want problematic officers any more than anybody else.
Well, I would add, again, good, great comments, that we, we're, the environment, the threat environment, the business needs, the competitive, the market that we're competing in is always changing. And if there's a way to move, especially public safety, we've got to, we can't wait for an election. We can't, sometimes we have to do mid-year adjustments to our budgets. We have to bring emergency items to the council. That flexibility would be really important. The nature of policing is changing as we speak. We've been having these conversations at national level where in the past, officers have joined and they stay with one department for 30, 35 years before they retire. We're starting to find across the countries, everybody focuses on Aurora, this is where we live, but our challenges are not unique to Aurora. We're finding that officers, today's employees are much more willing to move around, especially when they don't have a defined retirement benefit, there's, which a lot of cities don't have anymore, there's nothing to incentivize staying with that one department. So we have to be very nimble. We have to be, I think, the more flexible and the quicker, more quickly we can move, the better prepared we'll be to respond to those changing environmental and business needs. Well, thank you for those comments.
And then on the final question, anything that's in the charter, we're bound to follow that as we're undertaking the collective bargaining agreements. So if there were things that currently might impact collective bargaining negotiations, if that was removed from the charter... if that was removed from the charter, then obviously, we would no longer be bound by the charter provision. If there was a similar code provision, we would still be bound by that. But as we already have discussed, it is easier to change the code rather than the charter. That being said, I do think that there are folks who want to see some things and certain things codified in the charter and harder to change, due to just feeling strongly that they need to stay a certain way without, unless there's a vote of the people. So it sounds like you're not of that mind. I know that that's a perspective that I have heard from other folks. And there's a little bit of that in the comments we received, kind of related to the Civil Service Commission and their role. So, so yes, if we took something out of the charter, it would be easier us to be, easier for us to be flexible in collective bargaining than it is right now when it's in the charter. But some folks might say, "Well, we don't want you to be too flexible, because then you might not be able to," or you might be able to argue, argue your way out of something that the collective bargaining teams want. You could just change it, and then you wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to say, "Oh, but it's in the charter, so you have to abide by X, Y, and Z." So I think it, it gets complicated when you start looking at how collective bargaining is affected by those policy decisions.
Thank you for that. It was helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Can I go now?
Yeah, unless you have other comments or questions. All right. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Lawson?
I have none.
Okay. Councilmember Marcano?
I'm just wondering if maybe we need to have further discussion on the potential of maybe, I'm going a little too far field, removing staffing requirements necessarily from the charter and putting them into code. So obviously, longer discussion that we'd want to have with our civil service agencies, but I think that that would really help with flexibility in the future, so that we can be more nimble as a city, to ensure that we're able to retain folks, but also, you know, address an evolving, you know, environment in terms of law enforcement and also in terms of EMS and fire, so.
And I don't know that we would be able to do that by the time of our Friday meeting, but there, it might be possible before it comes to the full council to have that conversation. However, I also think there would be some potential concerns about the impacts on the civil service sections of the charter that might make it more controversial than these changes currently are. But, but we can kind of check in and see if that's an approach we would rather look at. And Chief Oden, did you want to come down and have something to say about that subject?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to touch base quickly. There was one small change that we had that was suggested in here. It was more of a correction. We did have the opportunity to present it in front of public safety courts.
Oh, we're not there yet. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's next, right? Because it's, it's the part of lateral hires for fire?
It is.
Okay.
And I think I'm a little confused, because we were talking about the promotional one in this one, and I did want to share.
Oh, okay. If it's promotion and not just hiring, then yes, please do feel free to comment.
It is the one I'm reading, the draft, if I'm correct. The one that suggests the early promotion for laterals, as well as the, the requirements related to a lateral-only academy. So this, if it's okay, ma'am.
Yeah. So the lateral-only academy is its own separate question, but for the promotion, please feel free to comment.
Understood. In the draft that I received of this, we were included in that. And while I support our public safety partners in their efforts to recruit and advance their lateral candidates, for AFR, we would prefer to be, that we strike firefighter from that. There's a, I think, a little more opportunity for PD officers to get the same experience in different municipalities, whereas our executive staff really feels that in the urban environment, that Aurora, the experience that it gives our fire officers, the time ingrained is really helpful for them prior to promotion. So that would be the only, the only thing I would suggest there.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. And then I don't know who on staff would help keep track of this, but as there were changes to this from both departments, can we make sure that those changes are reflected in what goes to council? Preferably, what comes to us on Friday, but if not, certainly what comes to council at the study session. So, all right. So any further comments or questions on this item?
Councilmember?
Okay.
We do have Jack Medruck from the City Attorney's Office, who's raised his hand online.
Okay. Oh, so he will be kind of tracking those changes?
Well, I'm trying to keep up, and I wasn't sure what the chief was referring to in that. I think we got a little confused. The, the lateral, the exclusive lateral academy for the fire, the change for the fire department is part of this particular item. When we organized it, it made sense to keep all the topics lateral-related in the same question. But, but Chief, could you clarify exactly what, what section you were, what you were trying to not change for fire that was being changed for police?
Yes, it's in Section 10. It's the area, it's about midway down in the paragraph on page one. It says, "Or the lateral candidate has been a full-time paid officer or firefighter in good standing in any jurisdiction for at least five years, with at least two as an Aurora police officer or firefighter." We would like to eliminate fire from that. So we would eliminate the words "or firefighter" in the early, early in a sentence, as well as "or firefighter" at the end of the sentence, is what we would suggest.
So where, where police have said tonight that they want to change their number to three, three of the five years, you want to keep it, you want to, you want to keep five years as being the requirement?
Like, we would like to not change that. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm now looking back at the packet and the way we broke it up, because when we first heard this, they were all together, and then we asked to break them out. And I think some of what...
Questions?
No, I see, I see three.
I only see two.
I see three ordinances in the backup.
So if I may, that, I think that the confusion out of the committee meeting was that there was a little bit of disconnect with what was being asked for and what the committee was thinking the topics were. So I split this out. Basically, all things lateral are in one, one of the items. All things, the disciplinary actions were one. And then the other was the, the promotional opportunities, or promotional and disciplinary was one. And then the third is the, is the clarifying the, well, let me go back. Lateral was one. The second one was, I'm scrambling through, looking through to make it right, because we were so confused after the last time.
Looking at it, Jack, and I think what happened is that what Division Chief Jewell just described was the 2C, so I apologize, was the stuff that was in the third ordinance. So I apologize, Chief Oden, for not having you down for that, because that is the one that we wanted you to comment and present on. And then Division Chief Jewell, the probationary and promotional, was all the stuff about time of leave.
Correct.
And how that counts in probation that someone might face. So we'll cover, we just flipped 2B and 2C accidentally, so no worries. We'll just go over 2B next. So that's no big deal. Thank you for, for clarifying, Jack. That's very helpful. And now I think we kind of understand better how it got separated out into the three different ordinances after the last committee meeting. So thank you for coming down and speaking and sharing those changes, and we'll make sure they're reflected when it goes to the full council.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Oh, and then I will review, so if you want to stay down, actually, Chief Oden, I will review the change, or the comments, in case you all have any responses to the public comments. So...
Councilmember?
Yep.
We do have one person online who'd like to speak on this item as well.
Oh, okay. I apologize. We'll go ahead and hear from the online commenter as well.
Arnie Schultz, please unmute, and you're welcome to speak.
And I believe I am unmuted. As I've resident of Aurora for over five decades, the vetting process needs to be a lot stricter than it has been at times. It fluctuates quite a bit, as does the firing process. And the firing process seems to be very dependent on who the chief is and who's on the Civil Service Commission. And I would like to see some sort of an independent body make the final decision with a negotiator, an independent negotiator involved in the process as well. Because there've been some offices that have been rehired by the chief that should have, in my opinion, and in the opinion of many other people, should have been fired and weren't. And there were some instances in which the Civil Service Commission overruled the chief, which again, in my opinion and the opinion of many others, was wrong at that time. That whole process needs to be cleaned up, so we have a more accountable police force. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any kind of responses regarding that?
Well, I can, this is our officer of the police chief. I can just tell you that building accountability systems are part of what we're doing now with the consent decree monitors process. As a matter of fact, we're now looking at our, moving into our, really taking a deep dive in terms of our disciplinary processes. And that's really going to be handled, quite honestly, through this consent decree that we're in, in which we just finished year one of a five-year process. And I'm confident that we, that when we're done with that process, that the gentleman that was just speaking will be very pleased with what we've done. We've already done some things unilaterally before the monitor even started really getting into that, which includes launching our internal investigations immediately, concurrently with any critical incident or criminal investigation that may be handled by another agency. I strongly believe that is a best practice. And if you look closely, I'm not going to talk names, I don't think that's appropriate in this hearing, there are members of this department, former members, that had we not made those changes, that they would have still been on our books. Some might have been paid, some might have been unpaid, depending on when and where. But rest assured that this consent decree process is, is really a great tool for our department to institute changes that are positioned us to be the world-class agency that we aspire to be and that the community wants us to be.
All right. Thank you for that.
And I raise my hand, and I want to thank the chief for that. And I think the dissent decree is something that was very much needed and is being followed.
Yeah, because I think, can I make one more comment?
Yeah, absolutely. Feel free to dial up.
It shouldn't be, Madam Chair, it shouldn't be lost. You mentioned that police chiefs have brought back police officers, some of them maybe because they lost appeal. But I would argue that the biggest challenge in American policing aren't the cops. Majority of the police officers, even our greatest critics would say, are good, dedicated professionals. It's leadership. It's leaders making poor decisions. And we'll talk about bypasses in the next section, where someone recently promoted that arguably should have been criminally charged with DUI. It wasn't police officers that made the choice not to carry out their duties. It was the highest levels of the department. And so I would just point out, sir, that was online, that, you know, shame on us as leaders, that we made decisions that are still being talked about four years later, hurting the good men and women that had nothing to do with those decisions. And so we appreciate your comments in terms of leadership online.
Yes, thank you. And there has been good leadership, and some of that good leadership has been fired unnecessarily, in my opinion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Is there any further comment in person on this item or online? Okay. No further comment. Online, the feedback we received is that folks are fine with laterals, and however, we want to handle that as long as the investigations are thorough. And specifically, they wanted to indicate that we should weed out applicants with extremist behaviors or views during the application process. And then the other comment, other than no opinion, was that they'll support, again, whatever will increase our ability to fight crime and make sure that we have, you know, a safe and good community. So those are the only comments, and I think those are pretty consistent with what we already discussed. So thank you all for presenting that item, and we will hear that in our upcoming committee meeting, and then it will go forward for further discussion to the full council. And so we have one more item from this group, and maybe Chief Oden, you may want to stay down here, even though it primarily focuses on APD, in case there's anything that you want to weigh in on. And that's probationary and promotional procedures. So Division Chief Jewell will give the presentation, and then there will be any other comments.
Great. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is Section 2, and it's in the conversation about probationary employees is where it starts off. And what the request is here is that the charter be changed, so that if somebody goes into a restricted duty status for a period, a consecutive period of more than four weeks, that their probationary time suspend a representative amount of time that they're on that not-available-for-duty status. There's been occasions when we've had people, and they get injured, any other number of things can happen, but we don't get a chance to fully assess their capabilities in a new position, based on the amount of time that they spend not available for duty. So the request is, if it's going to be more than four weeks cumulative, that the probation suspend for that same amount of time, so it just adds on to the end of their probationary period, and we just have that ability to continue to assess them in that new position. So that's the beginning in Section 2. Are there any questions with regard to that?
May I add, Madam Chair, a comment to that?
Yeah.
Because it's important for the community to understand that leadership matters, and leadership and promotions need to be earned, and probation needs to be completed successfully. We've had instances, not just here, but across the country, where employees that I know they're on the bubble, they'll actually go on FMLA. It's very difficult to keep people off of FMLA. Then their time spans, their, their one year ends, and hey, we've had a miraculous recovery, and they're good to go. And now we've got a bad employee, and not that we can't eventually demote somebody or take appropriate action, but the burden of proof shifts, and they know how to manipulate the system. So this is truly important to make sure people have 12 months of real work, of real evaluation, and an opportunity for the department to be able to assess their suitability for that. A good sergeant doesn't necessarily make a good lieutenant, or a captain, a lieutenant a good captain, so.
Well said. So then I'm going to move on to Section 6. And this is with regard to the promotional process, and a change that is asking that the chief of police have the authority to bypass a candidate for promotion with a specific reason. It has to be a specific reason. It cannot be arbitrary. It cannot be based on any, you know, protected class status or anything like that. It has to be something specific, and that that person has an appeal remedy through the Civil Service Commission if they feel that that is unwarranted. So there is a check and a balance with regard to this request. And again, to the chief's point a moment ago, occasionally, people can test very well, and yet they may not be the best fit for a promoted position. And this gives the chief the ability to independently assess that factor as well, that currently we just have the list that's in order, and you have to run that list in order. So I'm sure the chief may have some additional comments on that, but that is the, the meat of that particular request. I'm sure the chief may have some additional comments on that, but that is the meat of that particular request.
What, Madam Chair? Again, sometimes, at times, the best, for me, the best indicator of future performance is past performance. And quite honestly, you know, reading books and memorizing passages from a book or policy or law does not take into account your, your performance. And so the way that I would propose the work, I think the due process is really important. You'd have to, and this is consistent with processes across the country. It is called a promotional bypass for a valid reason. The department would have to articulate a valid reason that's supported by evidence, supported by performance appraisals, that's supported by past disciplinary actions. And then the employee would be, when they come up on the list for promotion, they would be bypassed. They would be given a notice of bypass. The notice of bypass would include the valid reason and evidence of that reason. Then that employee would have a right to appeal that bypass to the Civil Service Commission. But what would happen in the interim is we don't want to stop progress. So we talked about this in Civil Service, I don't know if you had a chance to talk about it. But I would like to promote the next person in line if they, if they don't have a valid reason and should be promoted. And for some reason, someone wins a promotion, wins an appeal, the last person promoted at that rank would be, would go back down to their previous rank, but then they'd go on the reinstatement list. And then they, within a year in the past, and we can write it any way we want, for the life of that list, they would be the next one up, if that makes any sense. But the last thing I will say that in the state of Texas where I was police chief for almost 15 years in Austin, nine and a half years in Austin, and four and a half in Houston, I used the promotional bypass process. But employees need to know, if for some reason I messed up at some point, you know, how long do you hold something over someone, right? And so by policy, I just made it a policy that after five calendar years, 60 months, you could not use that reason, whether it was a, you know, a suspension or something, you could not use it. Having said that, if you did other things in between those five years, you could still bring up that initial valid reason as an other matters, just to add context to why we might bypass somebody. But nonetheless, if they got bypassed, nonetheless, they'd still have a right to an appeal.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And Chief Otten, this specifically refers to APD. Do you have any comments about similar types of procedures for fire?
A little bit difficult. As you know, I've been here 60 days now, right?
Yeah.
My only experience with a promotionalist has been really still our candidates. And so right now, I wouldn't suggest that there's a need for us to implement this. If that becomes evident, I would certainly come back to this group and share that experience.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Councilmember Lawson?
Yes, I just have a question. Chief Osobito, I just have a question on the promotional bypass that you stated that you did in Austin. So within amongst your police force that you were over, what were some of the concerns with that? I mean, what were some of the the things that were brought up concerning to the officers on that? And I can probably guess what some of them might be. It's not, you know, fair and maybe some of that. But what were really some of the challenges, I guess, with that? Because I'm sure-
The concerns with having to bypass?
Right.
Well, well, see, sometimes police officers, sometimes we speak to both sides of this conversation. They complain about leadership. And then they complain about, oh my God, everybody knows this person's been a horrible employee. They're problematic employee. They've had really bad reviews or they were a drunk driver just, you know, three and a half, four years before. So I would say that the employees that most employees actually supported, were supportive, because they want good leadership. That's, you know, when I did that anonymous survey here, the number one complaint was leadership. And so I think once they see, change is never easy. You know, the one thing that police officers hate more than the status quo is change, right? So but once they see that it's very judicious in terms of using the bypass process. And once they see that there's actually an appeal process, I can just tell you that it's just, I actually got thanked over the years for a few of my bypasses by the employees for fighting the fight. That's been my experience. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Alia, do we have public comment in person? Oh, sorry, Chief Jewell.
I do have one more piece of this that I need to point out. So there is a strike and a rewording with regard to, and I won't read the entire sentence, but it's, it goes on to say, without reference to political or religious opinions, affiliations, race, creed, color, gender. That piece is stricken and it is replaced with the verbiage, without reference to any legally protected characteristics pursuant to applicable federal, state, or local law. The reason for that change in verbiage is the intent is still the same. However, we know that federal, state, and municipal legislation may change over the next any number of years. And if there's an addition to a protected class, then charter doesn't keep up with that if we get specific. And this just gives the broad statement of if it is protected at the federal, state, or local level, regardless of what it is, then, you know, we have to abide by that. So that's just a more general statement, but the effect is the same. And so that's the reason for that change in verbiage.
All right, thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Alia, do we have public comment in person?
We have Kelly Schilling.
All right. Thank you. Please come up and you know the drill.
My concern is that, once again, this is going to be codified in the city charter. And it doesn't allow for a lot of flexibility. It comes, and mentioned was a change in Colorado law. More particularly, there could be litigation that would force changes, but that could not be addressed in the city charter because we don't do this very often. So I would strongly urge you to consider removing this from the charter and putting it into an ordinance or other vehicle where it could more appropriately be addressed, given the impact of outside matters that aren't internal to the city. Secondly, listening to the burdensome, it seems like, process under which promotional opportunities are addressed. My goodness, we spend a lot of time talking about how to treat people that perhaps aren't ready for a new opportunity. What are we doing for people that are our rising stars? Are we burdening the really rock stars with a process that's too cumbersome and would let them, lead them to maybe decide to go someplace else based on portability and benefits and so on? So I would ask this group to consider a robust process outside the charter that gives the management team and the leadership the ability to be nimble and to reward the exemplary employees that deserve the next opportunity.
All right, thank you. Any responses from the chief?
Yes, ma'am. I think that if we had a bypass process, that that would be, that would do several things. Number one, it would eliminate kind of the entitlement attitude that some folks have sometimes. You know, only in civil service does somebody do, you know, a 60, a 90-day suspension, for example, which is the highest you could have in a lot of states before you must terminate. And then, you know, you know, three years later, they're testing and they want to be promoted. Or they're lucky they even have a job in the first place. So I think that it will give us an opportunity to actually do what you talked about, is to make sure that people know that your, your conduct matters. The way that you perform matters and their past performance matters and that it's much more than, it's just simply studying and memorizing some passages and answering some questions to a panel that doesn't even know who you are because they're outside panel members will not be enough that we'll be taking a close look. The last thing, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an attorney, but I play one, my other, I'm not kidding. I think that if we asked legal, that if something is in the charter today and tomorrow, state or federal law changes, that pretty much that becomes null and void. But I'm not an attorney. I would check with legal on that.
Well, it is complicated, I think, from our experience as a city. We've already seen instances where we pretty much had to be sued in order to nullify items within the charter and the implementation of those items. So I do think it's incredibly helpful that this gives that more general language and then includes pursuant to applicable applicable federal, state, and local law, because then as that law changes, we are staying consistent without having to get sued or modify the charter. Because with the strength of home rule in the state of Colorado, it can take that type of extreme measure for a charter change that's in conflict with state law to be nullified.
We might want to include then any provision of our charter that is in conflict with federal law or state law beyond just, but again, I'm not a lawyer, beyond just the protected classes that change and expand with time.
Yeah.
Let's just, as an Aurora resident, I would recommend that.
Yeah. No, I think that it's a helpful reflection and certainly your comments are helpful. I think we would be likely to again, run afoul of some pretty strong opinions regarding the Civil Service Commission and the role of the Civil Service Commission. If we say we're moving all of this out of charter into ordinance, that doesn't mean it's not a conversation to have, for sure, and really appreciate your perspective. But that's what I would imagine would come up if we implemented your comments as kind of the approach we were going to take to these items. And again, that'll be some back and forth we can have with council and with our leadership as we look at what exactly we're going to send to the ballot.
Well, then I might offer that if you're not able to remove that and give yourselves more flexibility, that within the context of the language in the charter, that you draft language that allows these managers to more appropriately address the immediacy of their needs rather than something that's A, B, C, 1, 2, 3 in a, in a charter.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for sharing that. Do we have any public comments online, Michael?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay. And then, Alia, any further public comments in person?
No.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lawson?
I have no comments.
All right. Councilmember Marcano?
No further comments.
Okay, I will go to the feedback we received from Engage Aurora on this item. One person indicated a concern about the Civil Service Commission and that it sounds like we're really trying to end the role of the Civil Service Commission by making these changes. And the commission needs to be more reflective of the general Aurora community and distance from the city council, city attorney, and APD influence. The Civil Service Commission could have one representative appointed by each council member and hire outside attorneys to represent them. And then another person indicated that they appreciate the police department, but when it comes to promotion and higher positions, it's important to review how knowledgeable officers are with respect to diversity and inclusion. And that if officers are going to be promoted, that they demonstrate the ability to engage with our diverse communities in effective and respectful ways. And then promote the best cops and don't get caught up in bureaucratic rules such as administrative ordained timelines and leave this to the police department to make the decision. So those are the comments. Oh, and then one person just said, no. Those were the comments that we received in Engage Aurora on that item. So any further comments based on this?
I would just add that everything that we've proposed, the Civil Service Commission plays a vital role in oversight and in actually hearing any bypass and making sure that there's an even playing field and that there's fairness involved in our process. So I agree with everything, except no. Unless it's K-N-O-W, unless it's that no. Or is that now? Kidding.
All right. So any further questions or comments from the committee? All right, seeing none. Again, we'll hear this at our final meeting of this committee and then we will see any changes. We'll see kind of the final versions come forward to council for review and consideration. So really appreciate everyone taking the time to be here on these items and share your thoughts, both our leadership as well as members of the community. So with that being said, our final item is miscellaneous items, miscellaneous matters for consideration. So if we have any public commenters that would like to comment on any other items not already on today's agenda, then you may come down to the podium. Do we have folks already signed up for other items, Alia? Okay, so in-person, commenters first.
We have Ellen Wu on two separate items.
Okay, so Ellen, why don't we go ahead and we'll have you do one and then the other? And you'll have three minutes for each. Okay.
I apologize because I was just doing my homework. On the vacancies, questions came up. So what if the vacancy occurs like less than 30 days before election? What happens?
Then I believe that's when it goes to the ballot. In that case, although, how would you figure out who gets on the ballot? What do we know?
I mean, if it is an election year, vacancy happens 30 days before, what happens? Does that seat get filled? Does that?
It would go to whatever the vacancy process is currently. It wouldn't be on that November's ballot. There's a, there's a deadline.
Right.
So many days out of the next election.
I think it's 45.
Yeah, something like that.
The ballots have to be, have to go to the prayer by the end of September. Yeah.
So yeah, I guess if it's between those two dates, the 45 days and the election, then yeah, you would, the council currently would have to appoint. Presumably, if we implemented the vacancy committee process, then that would be the process.
I'm still confused about it. Anyways. And then on even years, what about the gerrymandering years of one and nine? How does that play in? And maybe we need to change the gerrymandering years to just once per decade.
Oh, the redistricting?
Gerrymandering. Because that's what it is, but that has been-
Changed.
What?
That was already changed in our code last year. It was that, to the best of my recollection, that is not in the charter.
So we're all-
That's in our code. And I remember that we passed an amendment, Councilmember Lawson, do you recall this as well? I know Dave Lathers helped us on it. It was clearing up the language to specify when redistricting shall happen, rewarding shall happen. And we changed it to say, instead of on odd years, it's the year before the next regular election. So it doesn't specify odd years anymore.
So that we weren't changing it during an election year?
Exactly.
But it's still not only once a decade.
Wait, wait, go back.
It's twice a decade still. Because we did like, because you know, you have the the census and then you have like an updated count that occurs about halfway through the decade. So it'd pull from both of those data points. But yeah, the language was already updated at least to not do, just do it on years ending in three and nine, I think.
No, one and nine.
Used to be. Was it one or?
I think it was three and nine.
Yeah. I thought it was three and nine as well.
Yeah, because it was six.
Yeah.
Because-
We passed that last year, if I'm not mistaken.
But in any case, like now, it, the language is flexible so that it would be before the next election. So if we changed to odd years, then it would just be the year before the odd year election at the census date and then the midpoint between the census date. Like those would be the two times and we would just do it before the next year's election, once we had that data. And that's again, to make it flexible. And that's again, to make it flexible to other changes and also not have it happening in an election year. Like we implemented the new ward boundaries in December of last year before this year, which is an election year.
Right.
So gerrymandering will still happen twice in a decade?
Redistricting, yes.
No, I'm going to say. I mean, because, because I say that.
Twice in a tenure period, yeah.
Councilmember? City Clerk Rodriguez is available online and has her hand raised.
Okay, um, yes. City Clerk Rodriguez, please feel free to weigh in.
I'm sorry, I was not, I was talking and I was not, I muted. So I'm going to go back to the vacancy that you're all speaking about first. In our city code and charter, it says if an appointment occurs 90 days or more before a regular municipal election, the person will hold office until the date of the upcoming regular election. And then if an appointment occurs less than 90 days before a regular municipal election, that person will hold office for the unexpired term of the previously vacated office. So it's 90 days.
It is 90, okay.
So, I mean, that's a per-choice vacancy. What if something tragic happens? They would not be able to fulfill the duties of the office.
That includes a death, vacancy, any kind of vacancy resignation, a vacancy due to any reason.
So if it's less than 90 days before the election, they would fill the remainder of the unexpired term of the person who vacated for whatever reason, including tragic reasons or deaths.
So it would be an empty seat?
No, the person who's appointed would serve past the election date. If it was more than 90 days, they would serve only to the election date. If it was less than 90 days, they would serve to the next election that that seats up for election.
So if this change on the vacancies happens, then would it still go to committee and all that other stuff?
It would go to the new process if it were to change. The timing doesn't change. It's just what process we use to fill the vacancy would change.
So if 30 days before the election?
That hasn't, that bears no, it has no bearing on what, the process is the only thing that we're changing here, not the timing. So you'd have a vacancy committee with the folks who signed the petition basically for that candidate.
So if it's 30 days before the election and it's vacant, it would still go to the committee to fill that seat?
Yes.
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 Okay. Maybe I understand. So on the gerrymandering.
Councilmembers, I was going to follow up with that answer. So right now, what was changed recently is it says that ward boundaries within the city are reviewed on the year immediately prior to the second and fifth regular election each decade.
Okay.
And then you also, of course, if there's significant changes to population or to the county precincts, we can also review the wards and make updates at that time. But it is required, again, the year immediately prior to the second and fifth regular election each decade.
Second and fifth?
So the fifth being the end of the decade, right? Because they're every two years.
My concern with the double gerrymandering is because, no, because in my, in Ward 1, which I've been in Ward 2, I've been in Ward 1, I've been in Ward 2. There's been changes, you know, every two years. And at times I've not even known who my council member has been. And at times I've also not been able to vote for council for eight years because of the gerrymandering. And that's why I also have asked that it be changed to once per 10 years based on census.
And that's a code change, not a charter change.
So, I mean, it really makes losing the vote really apparent when you don't get to vote for eight years.
Right.
Or you get change of your council person and you didn't vote for that person or you didn't even know that there was a change. So that should be another consideration. If we're going to do, change the even year voting, that we also consider gerrymandering once a decade. Just because of that, because you lose a lot of voter incentive when you don't get to vote for eight years.
Yep.
Or you get changes of council people and it's like.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
May I jump in? There used to, the regulation was every year ending 3 and 9. So before this change about the second and fifth election, it used to be wards are reviewed prior to election years held in years ending 3 and 9. And we also, some of our criteria is that we want to impact as few residents as possible. And we do not move sitting council members outside of their ward either. So we try to, to impact as few residents as possible when we're doing the reboundering.
So I do know, Katie, like I know what Ellen is talking about because there's a Ward 2, Ward 5 boundary area that gets moved a lot. And the Ward 2 and Ward 5 are in opposite cycles. So I have had people be like, oh, I'm finally going to get to vote for my Ward 5 representation. And then they get moved into 2 right before that election year. And then they're like, well, now I guess I get to vote for this Ward 2 representation. And then they get moved back into 5 right before that election year. And so have basically never been able to vote for their ward council person. So I have heard about this issue in some of those kind of boundary areas that we have. That being said, again, this is, that would be a code change. If we wanted to say we're only going to do it once a decade following the census, we could do that. I think your point relevant to the charter is if we're going to look at changing election years, we might also look at that code change relevant to that issue. And we could definitely look at that.
Because we might run into this again if we change it to even years and then we're gerrymandering and then some people may never get to vote for their council member.
Right. No, I know people who have had, I think we finally didn't do that this time. So now some of the people that kept getting switched back and forth are just still into and not moved back into 5, so.
I mean, just from past experience, I think I went eight years without having to vote for a council member. And then I get changed every two years and with worry of, oh my God, is it going to be another council member? And then it gets into the cycle of when will I get to vote for a council member?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So we can look at that if, you know, well, we can look at that in general, but certainly in relation to this change. But that would be again, code, not charter.
Yeah, but, I mean, that was just a concern. If we're changing a year, we're changing. I mean, it's like, when? You know, and it disenfranchises voters.
Yep.
Because it's like.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate those comments and thank you. And yeah, we can have a separate conversation about the code change with respect to that.
I just, I have a question for Councilmember Marcano on the vacancy piece and what Ms. Wu said as well. So if we get down to the 30 days, so you know what happened in 2019 when we had the vacancy? And we couldn't get to a decision of who we wanted to put into that position through an appointment. And it is the 30 days and we have this appointment. And then we go to your vacancy. So we can't come to an agreement. Okay, so what happens? I guess what I'm trying to understand in your, in your proposal is, does it go to the vacancy after the election? Or are we voting for somebody? Is the, does the registered voters have an opportunity to vote for someone prior to that election? Because to me, we couldn't get to a vote. And you remember that very well.
Yes, I have 130 rounds.
Yeah, 200 and something.
Yeah, so to clarify, with this proposal, if it were adopted, we would never have a vote. It would immediately go to the vacancy committee. Yep.
So then in that case, the vacancy would have been filled up until the regular election, at which point someone else was elected. And I think that's, right, so if we're looking at a term that's about to expire and it became vacant 30 days before, I think then it may end up remaining vacant until the election only because that vacancy process might take pretty much the 30 days that you have. But if it was a term that wasn't expiring until the next election, then it would be filled by the vacancy committee and then they would serve out the remainder of that term until that next election.
Which I want to point out that even if with our current procedure, if someone had to vacate 30 days or even two weeks before, that would be virtually impossible for us to fill during that time just with postings and everything else that's necessary, so.
Yeah, that's true. All right, do we have any further public commenters in person, Alia?
We have Ryan Collins.
All right, please come down and you can introduce yourself, speak, ask questions, and there can be questions answered.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name is Ryan Collins. I'm born and raised, city of Aurora, 12 years at APS. I have a bachelor's degree and a law degree from the University of Denver. Own a home in Aurora as well. I think I talked today about one of the proposed charter changes, specifically the one referring to removing the mandate for municipal elections to be nonpartisan. I think this is one of the more important issues that the charter revisions are attempting to address. I think that this is a really good idea, something that I support. I think, and I think I agree, I think most people agree that, you know, we want people running for city council, we want people in city government to be, you know, more than just kind of political party archetypes. We want people who are, who care about issues that might just be local in nature, that might not have anything to do with partisan divides. But I think that the idea that simply forbidding people from expressing part of their identity, their political identity, when they're running for office, doesn't do anything to actually achieve that goal. It allows elections to look nonpartisan, but doesn't actually make them nonpartisan. It doesn't make it so that the people running aren't running with support of power and money interests, without support from political parties, without being in these organizations. All it does is make it so that would a voter who has a job, has a family, does not have enough time to become engrossed in the world of city Aurora, city of Aurora politics, to make a decision about who's the person who's going to best represent their values. It makes, it gives them one less piece of information to know about that person and one less piece of information to kind of figure out how to best vote for the thing that they want to do. And it might lead to people feeling confused. It might make them vote for people, you know, based off of, you know, paid advertisements that are being delivered to their door that are paid by money interest as opposed to someone who might be able to represent their views. And it, all it, you know, I believe in a government that is, you know, efficient. I believe in one that's fair. And I think the fairest, the best way to ensure that the government is fair is that to give everybody all the information as possible about what is happening in that government. And that includes not hiding the political affiliations of the people running for office. I mean, I think it is ridiculous that, you know, everybody knew that Mayor Mike Kaufman is a Republican. He was a Republican in Congress. He's been a Republican his entire life. Everybody knows he's a Republican, right? Everybody who's politically engaged at least knows that he's a Republican. But when you get a ballot in the mail on election day for mayor, you're not able to, you don't know that. That's hidden from people. And I think there's no reason to hide anything from people. I mean, I think that anything, and there's no reason why someone couldn't run for city council who's a registered independent and say, I'm an independent, I don't belong to a major political party, or I belong to a third party, I'm a libertarian, I'm a socialist, I'm part of the Constitution Party. Like there's room for that. But that doesn't, that doesn't mean that every election is going to devolve into Democrat versus Republican. We're not asking for primaries. We're not asking to limit the amount of people on the ballot. You could still have different, three different Democrats who disagree about how the city can run and they could still run and they could still run a fair and free election and just say that they're all Democrats. And that doesn't, that's not going to hurt anybody at the end of the day. I think the only thing that hurts somebody is keeping that information away from the public. And I think just mandating that that cannot be said, even if someone wants to, I think is ridiculous. I think anything if someone, I mean, I think, I mean, I think the people should be required to express their, you know, if they're affiliated with a political party, that's something I want to know about before I vote for them. And so I think that's something that should be required. And so that's just what I wanted to speak to today.
Okay, yeah, thank you so much for your comments. And we have had a pretty lengthy discussion on this item and on those points. So, but thank you for kind of coming and sharing that. And we'll include that in our consideration for.
Thank you.
Our last round of meetings. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And that being said, there are some additional online comments that have come in about items that we've previously heard. So I do want to just review those new comments that we did not hear at our previous public hearings. Oh, are there any other folks in person? Any other folks online? Oh, yes.
We do have Arnie Schultz online.
Okay, and it looks like we also have Kelly Schilling would like to give some miscellaneous commentary.
Just very quickly, I'm a little befuddled. My question's about process, the city charter amending process. At the last public hearing, the attorney commented a lot about, in particular, in regard to Strong Mayor, but he talked about timeline. And I'm having, I've been on the website, but I'm having trouble getting my arms around the process. Is there a place I can go to educate myself? Because when I, the things I found on the website talk about the next meeting, the next step in the process, but it, I'm not sure when council is, what council's going to do, when the solicitations for the petitions happen or the paid solicitors or. I'd like to learn about process. So if you could direct me to and help me get educated about that, I think that'd be, that would be good.
I think the city clerk's website is probably the best place to kind of get that general information. But as far as the this process and then the petition onto the ballot process, those are two separate processes. So I did ask for general information to be shared with the public about Strong Mayor forms of government because I had heard that something may be coming forward. But all of that conversation we had was general high level. This committee never had access to or the ability to review the language for what's being put out to petition, nor did the Citizens Ad Hoc Charter Review Task Force have access to that ballot initiative or the ability to give any comments on it before it came forward. So that's a separate process. That's the Citizen Referred Ballot Initiative process that goes through the signature gathering process. And that is, the information about how that works is available on the city clerk's website.
Is that the only one that's being referred, citizen referred?
As far as I know.
It is.
And you would think that if there were any others, they would be out getting signatures by now because there are various requirements and deadlines around submitting it and then having potential appeals to it and then responses to those appeals. So there's a pretty, you want to have a good runway if you're doing a ballot initiative only to ensure that all of those possible processes are completed by the time we get to the ballot. And that this initiative may run afoul of those timelines as well because it's kind of a little late in the game to be starting a ballot collection process. So I don't expect any other ones to come forward. This process, the council process, you know, we've been running the charter, the city council ad hoc charter committee since last year because we really wanted to go through a lot of issues in a very thorough manner and be ready to then go through the legislative process that we have to go through, which is a study session and two council meetings in order to refer something because they're ordinances. So we have to have, we don't have to have the study session, but it's a good opportunity for council to request any changes. And then there's a first reading and a second reading that are required before the ordinance is effective, putting something on the ballot. And we have to get that to the city clerk in time. And we have to get that to the city clerk in time for them to meet the deadlines that the county has for coordinating our municipal elections. And that information, the, kind of the deadlines for coordinating with the counties is available on the clerk's website as well.
And also, these proposals that we presented here, these are county council initiatives that we proposed that went through a commission. So although they're going to the city council, it depends on the votes, they may not pass through. So, you know, some of these could be null and void. It just, that's what's going to be kind of debated and, and discussed.
But for the council-generated initiatives here, the city council has to, there has to be a vote in favor of that before it gets?
Yes.
Yep, so it has to have six votes
Six votes, yes.
On the first and second reading
And second reading.
In order to then go onto the ballot. So anything that has been part of these public hearings that does not receive six votes will not go to the ballot.
Will not go on the ballot.
Okay, I think I got it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Arnie Schultz?
And I haven't had an opportunity for reasons that I think at least two of you know that have occurred in my life, on the language, the changes to the city charter. And I can, to save time, I can send those in on Engage Aurora so you can see what I would have said. Or I don't think you, I want to take up 20 minutes of your time, reading them or saying them. But I would like to mention changing the way our elections are determined currently. Right now, it's winner take all, it's in, it's in place, it can, and has resulted in candidates being elected with many more ballots cast for their opponents than for them. It's happened numerous times. I can recall one city council member who was elected with 26% of the vote. That meant that the remainder did not vote for that council member, but that council member got to serve. So it needs to change. And I think ranked choice voting is the way to go. It increases voter participation. When voters are fully able to express their preferences, voter turnout also tends to increase. A recent study has shown that turnout in elections using ranked choice voting increased by 10% even after accounting for other factors. It saves money and time for jurisdictions by doing the other costly procedure of runoff elections like happens in Denver. They're not only costly, but also less representative. Runoff elections tend to have low and unbalanced turnout, resulting in selection of candidates who may not actually reflect voter preferences. Ranked choice voting avoids the spoiler effect. Voters do not have to worry about strategically voting for candidates that they do not like in order to vote, avoid throwing away or splitting their vote. If a candidate B is a voter's choice, that person can vote for B without fear that their vote will be wasted. They get to vote for their top three choices. It reduces negative campaign tactics. It forces candidates to abandon negative campaign tactics because candidates not only need the first choice votes of their supporters, but also the second and third choice votes from voters who prefer other candidates. And a study is showing that jurisdictions with ranked choice voting have experienced friendlier campaigns and a majority supported in the cities that are using it. It also provides equitable representation. In multi-winner ranked choice voting elections, minority communities and communities with a diversity of backgrounds can elect candidates of choice. And this in turn can lead to a more diverse array of candidates. And it was mentioned about partisan and nonpartisan elections. I am also in favor of partisan elections because it prevents some candidates that had, like, happened two years ago from going to knock on doors and telling them, telling the people they were knocking on that they were a member and a progressive member of the opposing party that they are registered as. That needs to stop. And by having partisan elections, that will stop. I am also opposed to the strong mayor form of government for many reasons, too much power, too much cronyism, too much favoritism, the ability to hire and fire whoever they choose. And I will send my other ballot changes, as I said, in on Engage Aurora.
All right, thank you so much.
Just to let you know that I am in favor of the gender neutral language. I am in favor of even year municipal elections, of partisan elections. I am in favor of having a vacancy committee rather than doing it the way we did it two years ago. I am also in favor of full-time council. And Aurora's grown, the responsibilities have grown. Councilmember Lawson last time went over all the committees, all the ad hoc committees, the external committees, the unscheduled meetings, constituent services, workshops, on and on and on. And I would like to see a threshold on the number of meetings required to be attended if we do go to a full-time council. And I do not think the mayor should be allowed to make a tie because it gives them too much power. And Port town city council also limits the pool of candidates as in equitable and does not represent the community. And I agree in the higher pay, and I would go along with what Arapahoe County Commission is, earn $97,000 a year for a full-time council. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. And councilmember Lawson, I did want to clarify, you had gotten some follow-up about ideas like a minimum required number of meetings for a full-time council. Can you share that?
Yeah, so I did get some information from our city attorney's office, and they said that, I mean, it would be difficult for us to kind of do that. I mean, in terms of, I guess we could have a censure process or something like that. But basically, they said to me that the residents of Aurora are our bosses. And so that would be maybe through recall, through, you know, those type of things that we can actually hold a lot of the council members accountable so they're making sure that they're accountable for the meetings or for whatever the delegate, whatever the pay is and, and the duties that are available. So it is a complicated issue. I don't think council members are going to go with censure. So that issue is very complicated about putting a threshold on the amount of meetings.
Okay, so wouldn't be, even if we put it in the charter, it wouldn't be enforceable, essentially?
Essentially, it wouldn't be enforceable.
Okay, yes, feel free to come down and comment further.
So that's the complication with this and the higher pay.
In terms of placing requirements on like, either attending council meetings or attending meetings entirely, I know that there are some jurisdictions, I believe it's the state legislatures in Oregon or Washington, where if you miss this, if you don't hit the attendance targets, you're not eligible for reelection. And that might be something that might be able to say, well, you know, you get, you get your one, you get your term, you either make the attendance requirements and you can stand for reelection, or if you fail to meet those, you're not eligible. And so you're not able to run again. And that, you know, serves, you don't have to worry about, you know, repealing someone who was elected democratically from the, from the board, but it also encourages them to, to maintain, you know, active engagement in the politics.
And where are they doing this?
I think it's the origin state legislature. I know there's a problem because there's been, there are a lot of members of their legislature who are now not able to run again because there were Republican protests of votes where people didn't attend. But that is something that other jurisdictions do that might be more, might be easier to fit into the charter and avoid other sorts of legal challenges.
Because I do agree, I mean, there, to me, there should be some thresholds. I mean, if we're going to increase the pay and we're not going to, we don't have the ability to really say that this is your only job. And of course, you know, people have to look at their own economic situation.
Mm-hmm.
You know, someone, we say the pay is $75,000, for example, I'm just giving just a number. And then, right now, you know, then someone has another job that's maybe $80,000 or $90,000, they're kind of, you know, that's, that's going to be, you know, six figures.
Yeah.
And so I do agree, I think that's been some of the complications with this, bringing this forward, is because how do we account for the pay in terms of what do we utilize for thresholds or what the duties need to be of the city council?
Yeah.
So that's kind of been some of the things, and that's what I've been struggling with in terms of with our city attorney's office because I'm asking about some thresholds, but there seems like there's some things that I guess we, we couldn't do.
Yeah.
Besides a recall or something that the voters would be, because they're our bosses.
Yeah, it's definitely, yeah, the, the idea of pay for political figures is interesting because you're trying to thread a needle where if we pay people too le, if we pay people too little, there's a high chance that people are going to, you know, be corrupt in certain ways because they're going to care more about outside business interests that are supporting them financially than their political work. Or paying them too much where you have people who are running for office, you know, for the, the economic benefits of it. And so you're trying to find, you know, a wage that is stable, that is allow someone to live comfortably, to work comfortably, to be, you know, to be in city council without worrying about, you know, rent and all that kind of stuff, but then also not paying people too much to where it's hard. So I can definitely see that. And I think it's just, I mean, I, I mean, I think that it's important to pay, I, I mean, I would support paying council members even if it meant that there were no, like, there weren't restrictions on how many meetings they had to go to and that sort of thing. Because I think it's important to have city council members who are fully engaged and are, you know, tied to so many outside business interests. But, yeah, but I understand the, the problem.
And I think it's, it's semantics as well, when people, when you say full-time council. So if this doesn't pass through, I'm hoping that maybe there could be a consideration of a pay raise of council members
Yeah.
In general, which is something we have, I mean, something that has been done. And I, and my purpose is not just for, it's just to get, to me, more people who will be able to do this position, looking at the future of Aurora, and they would maybe have a choice to either say, hey, I can be, do this full-time council, or, you know, because I'm getting paid
Yeah.
A certain amount to do the duties as we're expand, you know, the city is growing. It's not only with just the growth, it's just the amount of work that comes with this position.
Yeah, you don't, you don't want smart, capable people saying, "I would love to be on city council, I have all these skills, I'd be great at it, but I can't afford, you know, the, the wages that it..."
And that's currently what's happening.
Yeah.
I've had multiple people that I have tried to convince to like, set themselves up to run for council in the future, and they're like, "No way, not for that money, I can't possibly support my family."
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, I just wanted to add, there are some creative ways that maybe it could be kind of adjusted.
Well, no, thank you for that, and I'll look into that for sure.
Thank you, that was exceptionally helpful, actually. I think it potentially gives us a tool to address a problem we were having in looking at implementation on this. So thank you for sharing that.
Can I ask you?
Yes.
Quick question to legal, whoever from our city attorney's office, yeah.
Jack Badjovic.
Yeah, Jack, if you're still there. Would that be a restriction akin to term limits, I guess, from a legal perspective? Is that why that, maybe something like that can fly in Oregon?
I think I would be foolish if I tried to answer the question without knowing all the facts. I don't know if that's something in their state constitution or if it was just legislated. I would note that their constitution is definitely different than our constitution, and the first thing I'd be looking at is to see if our constitution sets specific limits on what you can use as a criteria to hold an elected office. A city council imposing something like that, it would run smack into that, into that language. And I suspect there could be something there because that's the same analysis we had to deal with, with our charter note workaround when the electors decided not to change the charter to wholesale limit the felony conviction issue. And so our charter is more strict than what the state constitution allows and therefore is in violation of the constitution. That's a long ways of saying, I don't know the definitive answer, and, and without doing the research, I, I, I wouldn't want to, wouldn't want to say yea or nay.
All right, thank you, Jack.
Yep, thank you so much. And perhaps we can have some more of that analysis when this comes to study session. We can discuss possible ideas at our committee meeting Friday and then have the legal analysis available for the study session. So I am going to actually, just given the time, not review all of the comments that have come in on past proposals. What we will do is just give council the full, entire, in the packet, all of the comments that have come in on all of the proposals instead of reviewing the proposals that aren't on the agenda, all the Engage Aurora comments that have come in. So with that being said, are there any other miscellaneous items for consideration? Ellen?
Okay, so when you mentioned recall, recalls are very, very expensive, and it's the person who wants to do the recall that has to pay for it. And I bring this to mind because the Westminster Water Recall, we recall that. It, at first, they said it would only be $100,000. It turned out to be on the upwards of over $1 million. Yeah, it was a very, very expensive recall election and, because I worked it, it wasn't the most smooth, it was a bizarre recall election. Just because it, yeah, being on the inside, and it was bizarre, but it did cost over $1 million to do just that one, and it happened days before the election, general election anyways. And, yeah, so that's a consideration that even if the accountability of time, if it were to go to a recall, it would have to be whatever group had to do it, and then it cost, yeah.
Yeah, and that's why we didn't want to have that be the only provision for accountability that we have available because currently, that's the only provision we have for accountability that's available and, other than regular elections, obviously.
Yeah.
And it doesn't tend to be used because it's not a process that's really user-friendly or smooth or efficient.
Cost effective.
And so I think, again, the recommendation that had been made by Ryan is definitely something we, we should look at as a possibility for building in some accountability.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to put up a million-plus dollars, you know, send the money to me. So, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to think about.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Any other miscellaneous items for, for consideration? Okay, seeing none, we do not need to confirm a next meeting for public hearing. Our next meeting of the committee will be held this Friday, I believe, at 2:00 PM or is it 2:30? I'm going to look at my calendar. At 2:00 PM this Friday, and that will be available on WebEx. So if people do want to join while we kind of go through and summarize everything that's happened in the public hearing, as well as the information we received from the citizens' ad hoc charter review task force, then you're welcome to join that meeting. And then we will make our recommendations to the full council. These items will be reviewed as, at a study session, then at a council meeting for introduction, then at a council meeting for second reading, and all of those then at a council meeting for second reading, and all of those items that receive six votes will be referred to the November ballot. So thank you to everyone who has participated in the public hearings, as well as online. And we look forward to kind of getting this process wrapped up. So with that, thank you all again for your participation, and the public hearing is now closed.